Yeah, exactly. With the core material terms, you know, in terms of the campaign.
And I'm going to take that project and bring it here. This is down in the parks in downtown Fort Lauderdale. It's really interesting. Very expensive, though.
So am I to forget my name? We're like moving and moving.
That's it. We just don't have a place. No, those were all the speakers. Okay, sorry. Should I call this one? Good morning, everyone. I guess I'm calling this meeting to order. And I will turn it over to you, Mr. Ruge. I don't think your mic's on. We don't know. I think we didn't know how to turn them on. But Chris's voice is probably on.
They should. They should be on.
You just have to speak closer.
Yep. Get cozy.
Chris, do you want to kick it off?
Sure.
Thanks.
Good morning, commissioners. Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Here to go over at this work session, the Project Services and Operations Contract. This was on the agenda, or it was scheduled to be on the agenda at the last CRA meeting, although based on a lot of the questions that came out of Agenda Review prior, thought it was better to take a pause, go through some of the background of how we got to this point, some of the nuances of the overall contract. I know that there was some questions about the internal audit findings and the responses to those findings, as well as what we've done to build in some accountability and productivity measurements. And then lastly, we have Kim Briesmeister and Chris Brown with us today, in case you have any questions for them. This will be the first time that they're actually able to speak with you because we have been in a cone of silence for a little bit due to the RFP process. And then, of course, happy to answer any questions that you all have at the conclusion. So just a quick timeline. Back in 2014, the city outsourced the, many of the services and staff for the Community Redevelopment Agency. And then shortly there, well, I shouldn't say shortly, about five years after there, the City Commission decided to bring the Executive Director back in-house. And then that's, during that process, the Executive Director was finally hired and started July 28th. That's when I began. That was my start date, July 28th, 2020. And then the rest of it has essentially been direction about the evolution of now, how the structure of the CRA will be staffed moving forward. And there was a presentation, and I'm going to touch a little bit on it here in a moment, that I gave April 12th of 2021. That sort of outlined a roadmap that the board also gave direction on to move forward with. And since that time, we've been going through the RFP process, the contract negotiations, and then ultimately an approval of that contract by the board. So just to go back a little bit on that presentation that was given back in April, or back in April of 2021. So as part of the research that was done, both internal and external, on what to do with the staffing for the CRA, first and foremost, looked at other CRAs from around the state. And there's quite a few. There's well over 200 CRAs that are in the state of Florida. Now, but what's interesting is that they are all considerably smaller than the West Palm Beach CRA and much less active than the CRA. So it's really neat, if you will, that this, the West Palm Beach CRA is very cutting-edge in the sense of the work that CRAs are doing across the state of Florida. We're doing things that really no other CRAs are doing, which puts us sort of in the leaders of CRAs relative to whatever it is, project management, projects that we're doing, structures, so on and so forth. From an internal perspective, when I first came on, there was an assessment of what everybody was doing, what the current workload looked like, and what we anticipated we were going to need to do moving forward because there was a lot of concern from the board to make sure that the projects that were started continued to move forward. Met with individual CRA, board members, commissioners yourselves, on what you would like to see, as well as the internal auditor. There was an internal, a first part of an internal audit, then there was a second part, there's actually a third part of the internal auditor investigation. And so we've had lots of conversations with them, on many of which were recommendations that they've made in order to approve, improve efficiencies, transparency, and things like that, which I'll talk about here in a moment. But it was included in the overall presentation that I gave on April 12th that sort of informed the direction that we should go. And then lastly, it wouldn't be prudent to move forward without some type of community feedback on what we are hearing from folks outside of City Hall, on how they view the work of the CRA as being accomplished. So we reached out to our Advisory Board, the CRA Advisory Board for the Northwood Pleasant City CRA, as well as businesses in the historic Northwest, and even had a chance to have a conversation with the Chamber of, our local Chamber of Commerce, all of which said, you know, there really isn't a need for wholesale changes. It's more of tweakings and minor adjustments in order to approve the, improve the overall efficiency and operations of the CRA. So based on that, I mean, we did, and this is sort of a general summary of what we heard, is that, you know, they wanted to see more, all of that feedback really said that we should focus a little bit more on business development and what we can do to retain our existing businesses. Now, keep in mind, this is in the height of the pandemic as well, but just making sure that we're really building on the existing business community that we have. Marketing and communications continues to be something that we hear over and over. And actually, we can talk a little bit more about those plans that we have in place to move forward with, just continuing to promote the areas that the CRA is responsible for. Budget and process accountability, I'll talk about a little bit more, but that was something that really was driven by the internal audit report. And one of our main issues, or one of our main solutions to that is sitting at the table with us, that's Disa Campbell. And then also, there was a desire to continue to have that deep bench of knowledge, if you will, a continued source of information and expertise that the CRA can rely on when we have these larger, bigger, cutting-edge projects like the Sunset Lounge, or the Sticks Promenade, or even the Anchor Site, where they require much more than what we have internally inside City Hall. And then obviously, continuing to activate those areas to attract people to them so that we see the continued growth in our CRA boundaries. So after all of that was heard, and we did all the investigation, this was the proposed structure that I presented to the CRA Board back in April. So the purple box is essentially you all, the City Commissioners, the CRA Board at the very top, myself, just below it, the Deputy Director, which is now Anna Maria Pante, making that an internal city employee, as well as the Budget and Process Manager, actually it's now a Fiscal Manager, that's Disa Campbell, who's at the table. And then lastly, bringing in that Admin Assistant, that's the last position that we have yet to bring in-house right now, but that is currently in the works. Everything in blue is essentially, continues to be services or staff that we would then contract out to have a service provider provide those positions. And I did, because the DDA is such a great partner, I think it's just always good to sort of make sure that they're always viewed as part of the CRA team because we do have that funding structure, but they're just sort of out there, they have their own board, but they are a great, a great partner to sort of show the full picture of what this redevelopment team looks like. And this was the direction that we decided to go for.
Quick question. Can you remind me, are all of the positions that are under the contract firm permanent within that firm, or do they fluctuate based on the needs of the CRA?
Right. So there's four, four positions with the P next to them, essentially supposed to be part-time. And those are on an as-needed basis. The ones that don't have the P, the project managers, the construction manager, real estate, and marketing folks, those were the positions that would be full-time.
Thank you.
And you'll see those reflected in the contract when we, when we bring it up. So now, moving to the internal audit findings, because I know there was some questions about what we've done to address the audit findings. So first and foremost, and there's a lot of information in those audit reports, they are online, they're able to be viewed. I know Part 1 and Part 2 are on there now. So I didn't, I didn't want this to be a presentation on the audit reports, but to summarize sort of the findings, it was mainly things that approved the efficiency and effectiveness of management, as well as ensuring that we have continued transparency and accountability in everything that we do. There were some, you know, there were some recommendations here that I think are, you know, are well noted, but many of these have been addressed or continue to be addressed in the things that we're doing now. So what we've done, first and foremost, is that internalization of sort of that top executive team, that's myself, the Deputy Director, who is now Anna Maria Pante, our Fiscal Manager, which is Disa Campbell, provides that everyday look at every accounting transaction that's done, and ongoing look at invoices and expenses of every dollar going in and out of the CRA. And then lastly, the Administrative Assistant, which is just that support staff for the executive team that will eventually be included here in a moment. In addition to it, many of the other things that we're doing, our files needed to be cleaned up, so that's currently underway, and that just makes it much easier to find and locate things. One of the first things that I did when I came in as CRA Executive Director is took some of the best practices in some of our other departments. I have great admiration for the transparency of our Development Services Department, so taking their project wall idea and that concept of putting exactly what we're doing on, not only in our office, where anybody can come by anytime and see all the projects that we have going on, but also including information about each and every one of those projects on the city website, to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing on a regular basis and making sure that it's updated. One of the directions from the board was also making sure that we had a better relationship and inclusion of our CRA Advisory Board. And the Advisory Board has turned into a great asset, both not only in the value added of expanding knowledge and ideas and things like that for the CRA, but also from that accountability standpoint. I always like to point to one of our board members, Angela Ogborne, who is probably one of the only people that was able to find a, an error in a contract that was done by Nancy Urcheck. It's not an easy feat because Nancy's contracts are usually perfect, but she was able to do it. And so that just shows you the level of involvement that our board now has, and they continue to provide oversight. And as part of that resolution, we included very specific documents that they're required to review and make sure that they're comfortable with when they make recommendations to that board that look at everything that we're doing from financial to projects, and then also including them in ideas. And then lastly, one of the things that we didn't have, that we added pretty quickly when it was discovered, is a database of properties that we owned. That was something that we, was identified and brought to our attention, and we rectified that pretty quickly. So any, yes, Commissioner.
Where is that list? Is it on the website, or is it somewhere we can look at it?
It is not on the website, but it is something, it's just CRA-owned properties. So, but we can get you that. Andy Zipman has it, and also our real estate manager, Robert Treger, has it, and we can share that at any point. It does fluctuate as we sell or acquire properties either through foreclosure or purchase or something like that.
Well, I'm about to see it.
Sure, absolutely.
So thank you for reviewing the internal audit findings. And I can, I appreciate that it looks like we've taken some clear action steps to remedy some of the suggestions and findings from the audit, but I just, I want to be clear, there was no impropriety found in those audit findings, there was nothing that we should be concerned with that we're not already addressing?
I don't believe so. And that's because all of the safeguards have now been put in place. Any questions related to, you know, what's being approved from a work authorization standpoint, or additional work, or if there's, if there's things that are above and beyond the contract price, or any other type of use of, you know, city resources, whether it's procurement cards, all of those things have been addressed, mainly when you have that executive team brought in-house.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
Just, I wanted to take time, just because I know that this was something that was very important to the board.
Chris, let me ask you, I know a lot of these things seem to, the ones from the audit findings were, you know, possibly because there wasn't enough staff at the time, or inefficient management of the staff, but are you finding that you have the adequate number of people working for you now? I know that you only have a few of them that are in-house, and then others. So like, at what time, I guess, do you bring in additional resources from RMA as needed?
Sure. Let me be clear, it's so, or let me break that up. We have adequate positions. I need to get those positions filled. And we are not immune to the difficulties of finding people. Right now, we are down a project manager for the Northwood Pleasant City area. And we have tried, we're on our fourth try now, because we just can't get the staff. If we do find them, and we offer them the position, and RMA has been excellent in helping me try to find, it's per their contract, they have to do that. But even when we hire them and they accept the position, I mean, we, it just happened the last time. I mean, three days go by, and then they accept a position somewhere else, and we're back to the drawing board. So I believe that we have the positions in, that are required to do the work. And then if there's anything above and beyond, and I'll give a really good example, when we were doing, when we wanted to make sure that we were identifying the opportunity to run the Sunset Lounge operation, we wanted, we needed to bring in some extra expertise and efforts to really make sure that it was marketed and promoted. That was something that we went above and beyond the contract in order to make sure that that was done to a greater level than what we were doing initially, because that just required more resources. And that was because we were a little concerned about the, the amount of folks that we were reaching to, to make sure that they were aware of the opportunity. So we did more marketing, we did more public relations efforts, in order to make sure that the opportunity was known far and wide.
I'm trying to not, you know, bring in too much of the, my questions on the audit because you aren't Beverly, and that's not your place to give her opinions on her findings, but when it comes to tracking and project management, do you guys use a software that you share with RMA to make sure that the project managers are doing what they said that they're doing, and how does that coordination work? And then on the flip side, when it looks back, because what I understood from the audit was that it was hard to find things in the past. And so how can you tell if you're doing something and doing something well, if you can't look at the data?
Right.
And say, hey, look what we did, look at the money we put in, look what was created, look how many jobs were created because of that, et cetera. So is that something that we're going to be able to finally see, or is it not going to be possible because the data isn't there?
So, great question, Commissioner. So we don't have, we haven't identified a project software yet. It is something that I, now that I have Disa and Anna, because Anna's relatively new, to identify that appropriate project management software. But what we do have, and I'll, and I'll get into it a little bit more, because I am going to get into the accountability and productivity management, is to be very clear about what our work plan is, and track through, right now, an Excel spreadsheet that can be shared at any time, that lays out the 12 months of work based on the budget that's been allocated to the CRA. And I have an image of that, that work plan that I can share. And the, the idea is that we then measure that work plan of where we're at, tied to the dollars that were allocated to each of those projects, so that we understand exactly, okay, what has been done and what hasn't been done. And along with the accounting, the statement of encumbrances and expenses, we'll know exactly who's doing what and how much money has been spent. And then, look, sorry, I should clarify. And then in addition to it, eventually, I want to get to where we have some type of project management software or system that is even more transparent and has even more data benchmarks and things like that, to your point about job creation and, and/or, you know, the amount of commercial square footage we've created, or housing, or whatever it may be.
Thank you, Chris. I know that when the audit took place, there was a lot of discussion about the finding about inadequate controls and oversight of CRA expenditures, and that led to creation of the Fiscal Manager position. Maybe could you go into a little bit more depth of the process that's in place now?
Well, sure. I mean, first and foremost, every invoice, so, and I guess it depends on whatever the, you know, the financial ask may be, but I know from just a contract standpoint and making sure that our purchase orders are set up, and Disa can elaborate a little bit more if I'm, if I'm butchering it, but, because I really rely on her quite a bit now. But any, you know, from making sure that everything is done correctly, from adhering to the contract, purchase order setup, and then review of the invoices, approval of requisitions, and all of these different systems that we have internally through Oracle and a variety of other ones that I'm going to miss. Disa looks through all of those. And by the time it gets to me, because ultimately, it still has to go through the Executive Director for final approval of payments, she's already looked at it, you know, at least one or two times that I know of, if not more, in addition to going through the mechanics of our finance department. So it's pretty thorough, to the point where I feel very comfortable about it. And, you know, if there are any questions, it's immediately stopped, either by myself or Disa, and go back to find out where the issue is. So I generally don't approve any expenditures or payments without Disa's look on it, because it still happens every once in a while, you'll, you know, you'll get some type of invoice that comes through a department. And, you know, unless, unless she has looked at it, I generally don't approve it.
Thank you.
Disa, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, if I could just add to that. It's constant coordination and guidance, too, with the finance team. Everything we do is in full compliance with the city's financial procedures and processes. So that's an additional layer of oversight for us. And it's, again, constant communication with the team in finance and sure that everything we're doing is done correctly and efficiently.
Thank you.
I just, I'll keep moving now, because I know that we have a pretty big item with Curry Park right behind us, so. So now getting into the proposed contract, I left a copy of the actual draft contract for each of you, so, because I'm not going to get into all of the aspects of it, but, you know, it is there for your reference. In October of 2021 is when we issued it, we put that RFQ out for about 30 days. RMA was the only respondent to that. And in that, that proposal were those, those core employees that are needed for the full-time staffing of the agency, and they're listed here. Some of the highlights out of the contract is that it is for three years with the two-year, an option to renew for two additional years. And we're actually expecting the, the contract amount to drop about 800, or roughly just shy of $900,000 with a 3% escalation. And then again, as far as any additional services, those will need to be approved by the executive team prior to going, prior to approval, so that there is no expenditures that are above and beyond what is currently in the scope in the contract. And if they are significant enough, you know, we would actually bring those to the board for discussion and/or approval. So getting, now touching, going back a little bit to the accountability and productivity measures, so really, there's two sources right now that are in place. One is the budget, and that is, that is essentially what you give us on an annual basis. And it's a really great document that we have, our Statement of Expenditures and Encumbrances. It tracks it all the way down to the cent and breaks it down by percentage, so we know how much has been spent on each line item each month or week. I mean, we can run that report whenever we like. And it is what instructs the work plan for staff. So once that's set, we build out a work plan for the next 12 months with a very specific schedule of when things can be expected to be brought for the board and to completion. So that work plan will be our measurement for that productivity, and it'll give you an idea of where the project should be versus the current status of it. And then, of course, there's also the annual board review of both, both documents that I plan to share, that's actually a little preview, you'll, you'll get your first taste of that here, as we move into final budget move, budget approval. And then there's other, there's the other accountability measures. Of course, we can't do anything that is in violation of state statute, the strategic priorities set by the city, and we have our Advisory Board that makes, that is, we stay in contact with. I have a weekly standing meeting with our CRA Advisory Board Chair, Greg, who's great, and he is, he's not shy about asking very specific questions, so. This gives you an idea, this is a sample of our work plan. As you can see, it does, it goes down date by date, you have the budget that's associated with each item. And so in green, I generally say that, okay, I feel pretty comfortable about it. If it's in red, I just have a question relative to something with staff of whether it's the timeline, if they've associated the right amount of dollars for it, just where it's at currently. And then if it's in yellow, it's, it's a little bit of a less concern, but still something that I keep an eye on to make sure that the project is moving forward. And we have this for both CRA target areas, we have it for our marketing plan, it is very, very diligent. And this was created, not only, it wasn't me in a vacuum, it was created with staff, so everybody is on the same page with exactly where we should be on our projects annually. And this is what I intend to measure and share with the board in the upcoming budget discussions, so that you know where we were and where we intend to go, so that you can make the best decision possible when it comes to setting the upcoming fiscal year budget. And then this is just an example of the Statement of Encumbrances and Expenditures Report, this is run almost weekly, but we generally run it every other week. And as you can see over on the, on the right side, you can see the percentage used, that just gives you an idea of how much of that budget is still allocated for the remainder of the fiscal year, but breaks it down pretty specifically, and each project has a project number associated with it. So if there aren't any other questions on the productivity and measurement aspects of it, I did want to invite Kim and Chris to come up and talk about what they intend, how they intend to move forward with, under this new contract, and just some of their thoughts on the internal audit findings and things. We do speak on a regular basis, so I have a great working relationship with them, feel very comfortable that what we have set up will work moving forward. So if there isn't any other questions, Commission President, I was going to ask them to come up and say a few words.
I just have one question, one more question. First of all, thank you for the productivity and efficiency chart. I have always appreciated that, about your work previously with the city, is that you're very transparent about the work that's going on and our adherence to a strategic plan or plan and process, so thank you for that. But I had a question about a comment you made earlier, that we only had one response to the RFP, is that right? And certainly can understand continuity and how that can be very beneficial in this kind of process, but I was just curious if you thought that there was any other reason why there was only one? Is it, you made an earlier statement that we're a larger CRA than typically, is it others see, you know, hey, RMA is doing a great job with the city, no need for any others to apply, or any other thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, that's, that's a tough one. I mean, my, my guess could be is that- Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. I, I mean, my, my guess could be is that because it, I guess it does, it does reflect what we heard externally, which is that everybody is generally comfortable with the work that the CRA is doing in general. And so if there have been specific things that need to be identified, then those tweaks should be made, and we have made them. But if there is a feeling that people are generally happy with it, then, you know, my guess is that, you know, the private sector has simply responded to say, okay, well, you know, it's probably a long shot if we were to get it. And just in light of all of the work that is currently out there, probably a lot of firms that maybe would have thrown their hat in the ring are very busy otherwise, and just know that they, they were up against some very stiff competition with RMA as a result, and that it was going to be tough because of the general appreciation or the fact that, you know, folks are generally happy with the direction the CRA is going. Off the top of my head. I mean, that's, just made that up. Kim, Chris, you guys want to come up? It's up to you. Yeah, why don't you come up to the podium?
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Kim Briesmeister. This is Chris Brown. We're principals with RMA. And we very, very much appreciate, one, the opportunity to have this dialogue today. Chris started the presentation off by talking about the cone of silence, and it has been very difficult for us that for the last year we haven't been able to communicate with you. And some of you, you know, former commissioners recall, we used to meet quarterly as your consultants, not to step in between or to get into the, the day-to-day operations, but we wanted to make sure that any expertise that we bring to the table and/or any support staff that we're providing, or any RMA-centric provisions of our contract, that we could dialogue with you all quarterly. And we lost that ability during this cone of silence, which is, of course, important. But I do think going forward, it's very important that the structure of how this very unique model of operating your agency is discussed, and that we haven't had that opportunity with one of you. We have not met at all. Another commissioner, Warren, I think we had one meeting with her before the bid went out. So I appreciate today, because it finally gives us an opportunity in between a bid and our contract to answer directly, for you to hear from us, talk to us, anything that might concern you, we want to be able to, to respond to you. Another thing I think that we really haven't talked much about is, we won't get into our backgrounds. You have our responses to the proposal. Chris and I have been in this redevelopment industry for 35 and 45 years, respectively. We were back in 1995 crafting legislation in Tallahassee to make CRAs more transparent. So that thread of how a CRA functions and operates, we go way back in terms of respecting that concept of transparency at the statutory level, because cities are, are, of course, the implementers and have the, the onus of making sure that the, the dollars going out the door are accounted for. But it starts at the statutory level. And so we just want you to know that we've got a very deep bench of understanding of how the CRA operates, what the statute says, what it allows and doesn't allow. We are very, very comfortable talking to the city attorneys if, and we've had it in other cities, that a commissioner might come up with a project and say, well, this sounds good. We're going to probably come in and say, yes, but statute doesn't allow it, or if you want to do it, here's how you can do it. So I think when you get down to the audit, which I'll go back to in a minute, audits are good. They're very valuable at pointing out things that, from this level, at a city level or a CRA board level, because obviously you're a dependent special district, but you operate under state statute, not necessarily under all the city charter provisions solely. And that's important, because knowing the rules of the game at the state level sets that stage. One of the things that we found in operating a CRA, and we saw it back in 2009, is that CRAs, unlike other city departments, function very, very differently. You saw the staffing structure that Chris put up on that slide. Unlike other departments that are usually service providers and they have like-kind employees in departments, that is not true of an agency. And there are only a few hundred CRAs in the entire state of Florida. Almost none of them operate the same way. I can tell you, you have got one of the largest, most progressive, aggressive CRAs in the state. It is phenomenal. People watch you, they're very jealous of the amount of tiff you have, but they're also very envious of how you operate and how you function. Every time I've had an opportunity to talk to you as a board, I want to point that out, because you really do have a very, very powerful, strong entity through your CRA, but how you're running it and the investments you're making, the return on your investments, the tax increment growth is recognized statewide. And that's, it's, it's just a testament, I think, to the history of things that you've done. So your department and your employees, and they're actually, RMA staffing services provided to you, are meant to, to provide support to implement those programs. You don't have like-kind individuals in there. You have two project managers. You have a real estate professional. You have a construction manager. You have marketing folks. That's a very unique blend of services being provided. And where Chris and my background comes in is watching for decades how cities evolve and redevelop, being nimble and flexible, providing those services to you on an as-needed basis, and trying to keep this CRA as large and, and strong as it is, operating in that very efficient way. So you were not the first ones to outsource. Pompano Beach was probably one of the first cities to actually outsource their CRAs. But throughout the state of Florida, this model is actually still pretty unique. Most of them we manage. And Commissioner Lambert, to probably answer your question, we have not found another firm in the state of Florida, or even beyond, basically in the eastern region, that offers the services that we do. It's a highly niche business, because number one, you have to have that background of decades in the redevelopment field, and then because we've been CRA directors. I was the CRA director for the city of Fort Lauderdale, the city of Hollywood, the city of West Palm Beach for 13, or for 2004 until 2013. Chris was the CRA director for the city of Delray Beach. So a lot of those CRAs that we've watched grow over the decades, we have worn that hat as a director. And there's just not many firms out there that have the ability to bring that to the table. So I think that also had a little bit to do with it. We've enjoyed being your contractor for many years. I enjoyed being a city employee. But we also saw that other cities and CRAs could really benefit from this kind of support structure of managing an agency. And what we try to do is provide with you, like I said, over changing conditions, changing real estate markets, whatever it is during the cycle of your CRA, we try to provide that service. And in summary, I think one of the things that is real important, and Chris did point it out, is that you have your own structure and systems and policies as a CRA, RMA on the side. And this might be where some of the wording in the audits, if you read word for word, it appears to be as if something isn't functioning. But one of the things that, that is stated was RMA should do something. And we are, we are very, very concerned that as a firm, we would take a process, a policy, finances, outside of the purview of this city hall. We, we would like to keep, for transparency purposes and for operational purposes, the chart that Chris showed you. You are the policymakers. Then comes an executive director that's inside city hall. The treasurer of the CRA is the finance director in the city. So there isn't an, an option or an opportunity that we would ever see to have a parallel process, that we'd be doing something different. We want it to all be seamless and run through the city and the CRA. So I think you've got that now. You've got a very, very strong support staff in-house. I don't believe there's maybe one or two other CRAs in the state of Florida have a finance professional on the team. I think with the size of this CRA, that was warranted. And so that was a very, very good structure for you organizationally. But I didn't get the sense that there was anything nefarious. It was just a question of what does that quote-unquote firm, RMA, supposed to do versus what should be running through, you know, city and city processes and the finance department, et cetera. So I, again, I'm happy to answer any questions. We look forward to, you know, should you proceed with the contract and want to keep us, we would, we would very much enjoy to continue to work with you. We would like to go back to our quarterly meetings and have just even a 10-minute conversation to be available to you for general questions or even what's happening in the, in the real estate markets? What's going on statewide? What, what's happening with the rest of the CRAs in the state? Where do we stand? And that's what we are here as your headquarter team and support staff to provide you. And then finally, Allison, as you know, was your deputy director for many years. After I stepped down, you had a full-time team in here. She is now in headquarters. You still have access to that. Again, background and deep bench of experience as well and continuity. But also, you've got everything else surrounding, surrounding the agency on an as-needed basis. So we are happy to answer any questions and look forward to speaking with you further in the future.
So my name is Chris Brown, and I want to tell you that I arrived in West Palm in 1981. I came from the real estate development industry. I can't, I went to work for a very large Canadian Toronto firm, and we headquartered here in West Palm. I was, I lived in this, literally lived almost in the citizens' building for five years. So West Palm was my first home. And I always said after I left, because then I, I went to work for another development company in Boca Raton, that I always wanted to return to West Palm. And thank you very much. We have returned to West Palm. But you got to remember, Kim has been in West Palm, and we added it up last week, 18 years. She's worked in West Palm for 18 years. That's pretty phenomenal. Congratulations. But, so my background is, is architecture and planning and, and real estate development. And we enjoy working with Chris Ruge. Chris called me up, I don't know, six, six or nine months ago and said, Chris, would you help, this Chris, would you help me and meet on land acquisition? It's an expertise of mine. I did it for many, many years for many companies. And so now we're working together, Chris and I. And it's, it's sort of the, one of the services that we are allowed to perform for you is that both Kim Briesmeister and myself sometimes dig in and we become part of your staff as well. So we enjoy that. And so land acquisition is one of them. Parking is another. So, because I, I do parking for the city as well as, I wrote the ordinance with Ed Davis for the parking, for your parking ordinance recently. And, and we, and I do it for the city of Pompano Beach as well. So I want to tell you, we, we love being in West Palm, and we look forward to another three years. And we love working for Chris Ruge. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
More of a, a statement coming into this, just because I want to follow up on my comment about accountability and, and software. We're working really hard, and I guess I hope on, within your systems, that you are taking your experience in other CRAs and bringing that back to West Palm. So if there is a sophomore, software that's, you know, cutting-edge, that would be beneficial, if there are better accountability tools, things like that, that you're bringing that back to the city as well, because I feel like that's where, you know, our partnership is supposed to be working, right? You're taking your expertise and bringing it back here to help make ours better.
Yep, absolutely, Commissioner. Across the board, it doesn't matter whether it is, you brought up two of them today. But if there was something out there that we thought applied and it was, it was going to be helpful to you, that's exactly what you have us for. It is difficult. Software is difficult. But there isn't one that's crafted for the unique conditions that you all have. What Chris showed you is a very powerful way of tracking projects that move on a task-type basis. The project software that we have, no other CRA in the state of Florida that I know uses one in that way, because it becomes more cumbersome than how he has efficiently culled it down for something. You can see what's happening, who's doing it, and how much you're spending on it. That's probably more efficient than a program that you could use. But we would commit to you, of course, if it's out there and it's in our realm of redevelopment to make you more efficient, more transparent, whatever, we absolutely will bring it to you.
And I guess I did have a follow-up question. For the accounting purposes, you know, you mentioned that not everybody's done what we're doing and bringing in somebody internally. And so you guys were overseeing our accounting and our expenditures?
This is, this is a real important discussion, because it boils down to what I, what I tried to say earlier. When I was your CRA director, the exact process that every other department would have in place, when it comes to money, it is the same. You have a purchase order system. You have a budgetary process that you go through. The funds are held in the city's finance department's accounts. They are allocated and accounted for through your financial structure system. The treasurer of the CRA is your finance director. So everything having to do with spending a penny to a million dollars to issuing a bond runs through your city financial system. There's not one process that's different. I don't think having Disa has changed the process of how you spend money. I think it's added a set of eyes on making sure that the transparency of it, the double check of, did it get accounted for right? Was the right project number accounted to it? Anything that, that's just having somebody else with that volume looking at it is a very healthy thing. But to, to say that your, your finance structure is in place in your city and the city and CRA have always operated under that and will continue to operate under that system, that is in place. That part's not broken. It's, it's really, how do you make sure that, that you're catching anything that might just have erroneously either been coded or not checked or something?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for all of the experience that you bring to the, to RMA, and I look forward to it. And I have appreciated some, your leadership in the past. Can you tell me if there are things that you feel that you have contributed to West Palm Beach's growth of the CRA under your leadership? Because your leadership has existed through RMA as a, RMA representative, as well as, as well as the city as a staff person. Can you quantify some of that for me, what you feel were, were big wins that we've had in our CRA districts?
Thank you, Commissioner Warren. And yes, I'd have to go back, because I think one of the things that Chris also mentioned is, it takes years and years of building upon initiatives and projects from the time you as a board approve a budget. And I can go back to when this building was built. We had to issue a bond, and it was the CRA that issued a $100 million bond way back in the 2000s. And there were three things that were funded. One was the city hall and your library. There was the great lawn and the entire public space, and then there was the parking garage across the street. Even today, and I was the CRA director at the time, the foundation of those investments, and it isn't just that they were made, it's how they were made. I can never, even as a CRA director or as your consultant, totally take control responsibility or credit for any of it. It is always such a, a collective team effort. What we bring to the table is, we suggest, how will this impact you fiscally and financially? We're always looking at your tax increment. We're always trying to see what's going to grow your, your economic health and wealth, which is your tax base. So if we're going to have a project here, how is that photo center going to draw in people that are going to spend money in those restaurants? And ironically, I called Chris, because Chris in Delray had the photo center at the time there. And they operated very differently then, you know, than they might now. But it was really looking at how are you going to bring in uses and businesses that are going to impact an area? You had a Dunkin' Donuts at the time, which is, of course, generating tax base. But it's really, I think, the lens that we look through, and we have across the board, from this $100 million investment to the garage, how it operated, how it supported this structure, et cetera, to things in Northwood, the anchor site, putting an RFP out, and I'm bookending, you know, about 15 years of activity. We really try to make sure that it isn't just an expenditure. It's an expenditure that's going to have some kind of economic impact that generates a continuous cash flow for you to continue that positive investment. And that might sound logical and obvious. You'd be surprised how few CRAs actually effectively do that. So I think in summary, that's what I could suggest that we, we bring and, and offer a broader perspective for.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Do you believe that that has trickled to the women, small and minority-owned businesses in the CRA here in West Palm Beach?
You know, that's an excellent question. Again, I'm, I'm a minority-owned business. RMA is, is woman-owned, very sensitive to that subject. We tend to work in blighted areas where there is a strong need for minority investment. We tend to pay a lot of attention to crafting programs. And I think some of the incentive programs that are currently in place, some of them we wrote back when I was director. Some of them have been modified through the course of the years. But I do think that this CRA in particular does a good job at putting the tools that it has in Chapter 163 through the CRA statute in play. through the CRA statute in place to provide that support. Still difficult, still very much an uphill battle. It is a challenge, you know, to affect redevelopment in an area, but again, I can give kudos to Chris and his team. I think they're hyper-focused on that as well, and I think if it has to do with helping businesses, they're looking for a way, and they'll talk to us about it, "Well, could we do this? What about that?", to make sure that that support's provided for small minority-owned businesses.
Great. You spoke about incentive programs. Can you tell us about incentive programs that you felt has been very successful in the topic that we're referring to in particular?
Yeah, I would defer, I would probably defer for the last five years, six years, I would defer to your in-house team, because they're here day-to-day. They know which ones are really working, they know which ones are impacting the most. I can tell you statewide, and the ones we see that are the most effective, are the businesses that don't have the capital to get a loan and/or come in and invest in those heavier expenses where there's not a guaranteed source of income. It could be a restaurant. Restaurants are incredibly expensive to build out, grease traps, equipment, et cetera. It could be any other kind of equipment associated with operating a beauty salon or whatever, and I think some of those programs, and it's probably still true here, again, not being ultimately familiar with every incentive you've approved, but some of those programs that take on some of the cost of those initial upfront investments tend to be the ones that have the best return. And then you've got to look at job creation. Sometimes it isn't about necessarily an investment in a building, which of course we are focused on. It might be about number of jobs, impact in a community, or, you know, another type of impact that that particular investment might have. You've got, I believe, five or six different incentive programs. Whether you use them all or whether they get applied to, I'm not sure, but I think that it's that toolbox of having them all available that makes West Palm a target for people wanting to try to open a business here.
Thank you. Do you believe that you, or have you recommended best practices that have been successful in other locations? Have you recommended and brought any of those best practices to the city of West Palm Beach?
Yeah, again, another very good point. Back, when I first got here as your CRA director, there was not a five-year finance plan. There was an annual budget, and one of the things that we think for you as policymakers is very, very important, is redevelopment doesn't happen overnight, and the CRAs aren't processing permits that when they do it, it's done, or they're not building a road that when it's built, it's done. Redevelopment is a very extended period of time to have economic change and growth happen, so I think when it comes to having a strategic finance plan that's five years long, you can send the signal out to the private development world that this is what we intend to invest in over a period of time. It provides stability. So, that's one of the big things that we've, throughout the state of Florida, when we contract or work for other cities, we really try to get the board to determine what their longer-term goals are, not just individual goals on an annual basis. It makes a big difference in terms of continuity. Other best practices, and Chris kind of alluded to it, you have the power of disposition unlike any city in the state of Florida. The CRA's disposition power is unmatched, meaning that you can acquire land, assemble land, and dispose of it in a way that's very powerful in the real estate market. It is a best practice, there's not one city we're in that we're not focused on your real estate. Sometimes it's buying and holding, sometimes it's assembling, sometimes it's buying and building something, depending on what's the geography or what the problem is, but the two best practices, I would say, is setting up your financial investment for a period of time, and number two, looking at your real estate, because that's where you have the ability to impact your tax base the best.
Any additional questions? I have one question for you. Thank you so much for your presentation. This has been very helpful. I think for me, one of the most important things about the CRA is not just the projects that we have and the programs that we have and incentives that we have, but that people know about them. And you touched upon this when talking about the incentives, and, you know, my question always is, I have a PR background, so I know that we have, you know, one and a half to two people that are on the marketing stuff now, but we have a lot of things to market. We have, you know, community meetings, we have programs, we have movies in the park, we have different areas where we have, you know, neighborhood programs for kids, and these incentives for businesses or homeowners who have renovations that are needed, and so I think it's an enormous task, and not, some of these neighborhoods are not always the ones that, you know, these residents are not always on the internet looking at Facebook to see something that is, they're being promoted. And so, I'm curious if you have any best practices that you could recommend, or if you are already working with your team to find innovative ways to make sure that people know about these events and programs and everything that they're not missing out, because what I don't want to do is spend the money to have these things that no one's taking advantage of, or should we be spending more money to market the programs and have less programs to make sure that they're always 100% utilized?
That's an excellent, excellent point, and I hate to say this almost, but almost every CRA in the state of Florida suffers from the same problem, that it is very difficult to get the word out about the multitude things going on, but even to reach the different demographics or sociographics, or depending where you're trying to target it, because it's almost like buckshot. You have a program that might be for one group, but another program might be for others, or an incentive, or even what you're doing. The two best practices, and this is just because our world is evolving, social media is phenomenally powerful right now, and you're right, not everybody is on the internet, not everybody is necessarily looking, but what we're finding in some pocket neighborhoods, we call them influencers, and there might be folks within some neighborhoods that are influencers, and they live in that neighborhood, there are civic activists in that neighborhood, there is something that they are doing that people are listening to them and/or watching them. You're not going to find it by us putting something out on Nextdoor, or we're not going to get it out on Facebook, or we're not going to get it out on the city's website. So, it's a combination of using social media, but also trying to, for those niche target neighborhoods or markets or something, is go in and find out if there's any particular influencers that we can use. It almost has to be like a spectrum approach, because there isn't going to be any one silver bullet that's going to get all of the CRA activities out, and CRAs really aren't good at touting themselves and promoting the things that they do so great, but I do think Chris's focus is very, very much on tightening up and honing in on the marketing programs and the public relations, the media, and really trying to get that out in a meaningful way. And he's gripping his mic, so I can tell he wants to...
Yes. So, Commissioner, the marketing and promotion aspects of it is something that we're continuing to work on, and to your point about the amount that we have to market is really important, and our solution currently, because while RMA is great at providing the expertise from a redevelopment standpoint, I think with the marketing, what we need to do is provide a little bit of extra resources behind our two marketing folks, namely through some type of contract. We did it in the past, I did it while I was Economic Development Director. We had a company, it was Aqua, and they were really great, and they helped do a lot of the marketing-specific tasks of, you know, essentially implementing the direction that we give, and then we work together on the execution of whatever that marketing plan is. So, we've, and then in order to stretch resources, namely the budget aspects, we're working with Neighborhoods First, which is Tiffany David, as well as Rebecca De La Rosa in the economic development, so that the three of us can essentially use the same contract and expand so that we can all sort of tap into that marketing firm that can specifically help us with specific tasks, whether it's, you know, business promotion in the historic Northwest, or business development along the Broadway Corridor, or a variety of other marketing needs that I think are going to help us in the coming year.
So, I'd like to piggyback on that, because, and Chris knows that I've said this a couple times, and I want to say it while you guys are in here, because, you know, a lot of these little programs, while marketing is key, I think proof of concept is more important, and, you know, if we're talking about programs for facade, programs for marketing, starting new businesses, I'd love to see the data that shows, hey, we inserted, we had this program, and we gave it to these businesses, and they were percentage time more likely to survive that gap of that five-year for a restaurant, for instance, or something like that. That shows, we invested this money, and this was the return, and I have yet to see that aspect of it and utilized in other ways, because there are other CRAs that you guys work with, and so, you know, for, I'm in the north end, and so, Northwood Village, that's a huge thing. And so, looking at it and saying, hey, there was a similar, you know, street, similar to Northwood, and this is what they did, this was the program that they came up with, and because of that program, these 10 businesses have actually survived or went past the pandemic, things like that, that could be actually utilized for marketing, and they're not, they're just tools, they're, hey, look what we did, and that's a marketing for itself to even pull more businesses in to apply for these things or want to participate in these programs.
That's a, that's a very good point. You're going one level down of the analysis and gathering data to use for marketing, which I don't believe, I don't believe is currently being done. I don't know really of how many CRAs do it, only for one reason. It is a pretty long process to get, even a facade program, to get a business to apply for it, go get the three bids from a contractor, build it out, get it. So, over an extended period of time, if you tracked it or we went back and analyzed it, I think it could be helpful. I don't know of one that keeps them open. What the ebb and flow of businesses opening and closing is from our real estate hat, is, did we go in and invest in that building so that now, it does have HVAC, now the roof is secure, now there is electrical upgrade, so when the next business comes in, just because, just by the nature of businesses opening and closing, we lost one, the next one, the chances of that one being more successful are increased. So, a little nuance to what you're saying, but I, again, I think what you're doing is very, very good and very helpful. You're looking for those analyses and those things that could be put into place that would impact and would help, and I think those ideas, as they come up, those are the kind of things that, you know, we would say, okay, you know, Chris, is it something to look at, to look at our incentive programs? Which one was overly successful, and can we use that data as a tool? And those are, those are really good points. So, I appreciate that, just that lens that you're looking through.
Commissioner, so I was just looking at part of the scope, so the second to last bullet point on the bottom, collecting and analyzing data that assists the CRA in developing programs and projects to achieve the redevelopment goals. I'm all about data-driven results and decision-making, so it will be a benchmark of our plan moving forward.
Commissioner, Mr. Ruge, I believe that the CRAs are sustained by the small businesses in the area. It's great to have long-term plans and look at what those long-term solutions may be as we're referring to a large picture, but on a micro level, the businesses, the small businesses in our communities really need our support, and I'd like to know if, how we're measuring that, and to what Commissioner Warren was saying, how are we looking at the sustainability of the businesses that we have, and is there a measure that we're using with, to look at RMA's contribution to those successes?
To your point about how we measure it, one of the ways that we can measure it, and I don't have an accurate way of measuring it, other than I have to do it myself right now, which is our business tax receipt database. So, every year, every business in the city of West Palm Beach has to file for updating their business tax receipt, and part of that information includes the North American Index Codes, Industry Index Codes, or NEX Codes, and in that, we can determine, you know, all kinds of information related to, you know, the business, and when we pull that, that'll give us a good idea of what is happening with business growth, and, you know, to date, it's been pretty healthy, just based on the last time that I looked at the business tax receipt data. But I think as far as it relates to RMA, what I want to do is get a little bit more into, a little bit more into data sources that could tell us even more, and, you know, moving forward, one of the projects, and it's really kicking off with the Sticks Promenade and with the Sunset Lounge and all of those areas, is to develop that small business association, if you wore, if you will, for specifically the historic Northwest. There's already one that is currently in existence up in the Northwood Village area, the Northwood Business Association, but something very similar to that, that can sort of help us understand exactly what's happening with our small businesses in those areas, and that'll be, just be ongoing. But to date, I mean, we really do need to develop even more data sources to understand what's happening with our small businesses, and a lot of that is done through regular communications and surveys, in addition to some of the small bits of data that we have, like our business tax receipts.
Thank you. So, how do we anticipate measuring the actual, are you saying the only way that we're looking at that is through, that we would look at that through business tax receipts?
That would be the best way to quantify, if new businesses have opened up versus ones that have closed, because if the number fluctuates up or down, then we know what's happening in those specific areas. Where it gets tricky is that we have the ZIP code, but then the only other way to get it boiled down even gran, to a more granular level is to actually map it with an address, which we can do, but that takes help from our GIS department, and it's a bit labor-intensive, because, you know, we, it's like, it's essentially points on a map.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much for your time and for all you're doing for us.
Thank you. We very much appreciate it.
So, just real clear, if, is the, is the board comfortable moving forward with the July 11th date to bring this forward for a formal hearing? Okay, great. Wonderful. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to just go ahead and jump right in? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Curry, the Curry Park Project. So, before, Chris Bentoncourt is here with us, as well as a variety of his team from Chen Moore and others, to talk about where we currently are with the project. As you know, we've, we're coming into sort of a final decision that, on the design of the park, so that we can move forward with the permitting and ultimately the construction of this project, and this is, I know many of you, you've met with Chris and the team individually, and this is, we're hoping to hear from the board collectively on sort of any last questions or concerns that you may have relative to the project, because next Monday, this will be presented as Face of the City, which is an important step in the process, that we can then start finalizing those documents so that we can get the contract out to bid from a contractor standpoint and keep this on track with the aggressive schedule that we've set, to see this park re-envisioned. So, very important, very exciting. Actually, I had a chance to attend the Florida Inland Navigation District meeting on Friday, which went well, so Chris will talk about a variety of things, including the grant items, the community engagement that we've done, but just to reiterate, you know, the CRA was a big part of this project by taking on the consulting, the planning, and construction document components of the project. So, with that, this is a big step, and we look forward to presenting it to you all on Monday. So, if there is any other questions, and then lastly, if I can say, we'll be going to the CRA Advisory Board on Friday as well, to also present this project, where we'll get a formal recommendation from that board and have all of this presented to you as part of Face of the City on June 27. So, with that, Commission President, if there are no other questions for me, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Bentoncourt with Chen Moore.
Great, thank you.
Great.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I'm just going to quickly introduce my team. I wanted to make sure that we could adequately address all of your questions today, and it takes a team to put together a $30 million park. So, I'm just going to start from... a $30 million park. So I'm just going to start from this end. I have Gina Chielo from Cumming-Cedarburg, who's our coastal engineering, coastal engineering and environmental specialist, or environmental permitting specialist. I have Rachel and Hallie Boyce from Alvin, who led the visioning of the project. I have Warner Saravia from Stephen Boroff Architects, who's been working on the design of the Resiliency Hub and the, the café. And I have Dan Beederman and Kayla Hughes from Beederman Redevelopment Ventures, who have been working on governance strategies and activation for the park. So, this presentation will look familiar to you. We have made a few edits. So we started the project back in November of 2020. That's when we were finally given notice to proceed. And that was Phase One of the project, where we did information gathering, public engagement, and we developed the master plan that was approved in June of 2021, so about a year ago. We have since then started on Phase Two, which involves the design permitting and construction administration. Our time has been spent thus far on developing a lot of the activation, refining the master plan into a plan that can actually be constructed based on permitting requirements and available funding, and also pursuing grants, which we've been lucky to receive a lot of, and I'll cover that at the end. Our focus has always been to, to activate the park, to make it more present in our community, to connect to the neighborhoods that, that are just adjacent to the park, that seem a little disconnected right now, celebrating ecology, engaging the public through a lot of community events, and education, and performance, and creating resiliency. So that's been a lot of focus on, on creating a resilient park, and also looking at through the lens of managing and financing the park after it's been constructed. You're aware of our community engagement. We've had over 35 meetings with stakeholders, with residents. We've been out to the public, just with city residents, seven times. We've met with the advisory boards from both the CRA and the Parks and Recreation Committee four times each. And we've had a lot of focus groups that we've met with as well. So I think that, you know, we've looked under, you know, like, we've left no stone unturned. We've really tried to get to everybody. So we started our community engagement back with, with the master plan, in which we received about 3,500 data impressions throughout that process. And we've built on that since then. So we had 166 surveys, of the online surveys that we had responded to during that phase, or up to 231. And 75% of those responses have come from 33407, which is the zip code adjacent to the park. That is, that is the level of data that we have. And from the surveys, and from the, in, from all of our stakeholder meetings, and all the comments that we received, we focused on the elements, the activities and programs, and the facilities that rose to the top. And so that's what the master plan that was approved back about a year ago was based on, was based on that data. Since then, obviously, we had to refine the plan based on permitting requirements, so it's, you know, we've looked at it, it's a little different, and I'll cover that in a minute. We did five additional events. We did two more at Curry Park, Sunday at the waterfront. We went to Art Dine and Design in Northwood. We held a citywide virtual workshop, and we had an in-person meeting at the Pleasant City Community Center. So with that, we were able to, we were able to verify a lot of the data that we used to develop the master plan. There are some minor differences in that exercise and fitness dropped down a little bit, but it's still within the top four. And so that's what we, that's what we look at, you know, the larger, the larger groups. We dove deeper into some of the park amenities to make sure that the current plan reflects those as we design the specific facilities. We know that the great majority of the residents that responded to, to our public involvement campaign live within walking distance of the park. So very heavily, you know, very heavily local engagement on this. And a lot of the highlighted items that we talked about, obviously, they have concerns about the homeless population that lives in the park, and they request additional lighting, and a higher level of security at the park, as well as maintaining multi-use play opportunities, and maintaining the, the views to the water, and being able to engage it. And so when we studied the park, obviously, we looked at the context of the neighborhood, and we looked at all of the institutions that are there, both public and private. So we studied other parks to see what facilities they had, so that we didn't overload the community with the same types of opportunities, and to give them unique experiences. We looked at the, the schools in the area. And then we developed the master plan, which currently looks like this, based on a lot of the permitting requirements. And so, no, can you see the person up there? Yeah. Okay. So, so, so the master plan, the, the differences between the original master plan that, that was approved last June, and where we are today, is based on engagement with some of the stakeholders. In, in the case of both the neighborhood and the Florida Inland Navigation District, who paid for the boat ramp, we really had to rework this corner in order to preserve a better level of parking for, for boat trailers, since this is the city's only boat ramp, as well as accommodate tennis courts. So in the original plan, all of the sports courts had been focused on this area, and we lost a lot of the boat trailer parking. So, working with the community, we came to the consensus of, once we, once we tear out the existing tennis courts, because they actually live in the middle of the road currently, we'll reconstruct two tennis courts, and put back two pickleball courts, or add two pickleball courts, which was a, a high-level request. And two pickleball courts is essentially the size of a tennis court, so that's pretty typical. So it's definitely equal, and probably pickleball is a, is the fastest-growing sport in America. So there's a high demand for it. The rest of the master plan looks essentially the same. So the café is located here in the north-eastern part of the site, at the edge of the water. The Resiliency Hub Community Center is in approximately the same location. We have a splash pad at part of the entry. The playground, which is designed around the sea plane motif, because of the history of the park, is located near the entrance. We have maintained a multi-use field, which accommodates both daily activity, pickup soccer, something that happens pretty much every night at 5:00 o'clock, and so we still have the space for that, but it will serve a dual purpose for community events. Portable stage will be set up in this corner, that's why there's so much hardscape in this area. And from an area standpoint, this lawn is about twice the size of Meyer Amphitheater, for a sense of scale, so you understand how large it is. We have, we have, we have the Sun Trail running through the western edge of the park. It currently runs through, through the eastern edge of the park. What we did was, we created this linear space to be able to sit and engage with the water, and promenade along the water, something that doesn't, an opportunity that we don't have at Curry Park currently. And then, this is the fitness area, the fitness lawn, and the games area, in order to provide activity of the park on, on a daily basis. The MLK Memorial remains unchanged, and we've added parking to support both the park and the memorial at the south end of the park. And so, I think a couple of important points, based on, based on public comments we received, is that the boat ramps will remain open and accessible to the public. The parking fees for boat trailers will remain the same, so we will continue to charge for parking for boat trailers. The sports courts, we are demolishing the three existing tennis courts, and we're replacing them with two new tennis courts, as well as two new pickleball courts. So it's a net gain for the community in terms of additional activities. This is a...
Can I ask a question about the tennis courts while we're at that point?
Sure.
Excuse me, if you don't mind. Are there, I know that the tennis courts has been a topic of much discussion in the area. One, I don't know the, have we looked at the usage of those courts now? Do we know that moving down from three to two is in the best interest of that community? And two, by redoing the courts, are, are we also gaining any new technology with the courts, or new, you know, surface, or something that's maybe better than they are currently?
So, so the new tennis courts will be, you know, hard courts, replacing the existing hard courts that are there. So there'll be a newer surface. I think the existing courts were resurfaced a couple of years ago. And so, we're definitely giving them a new, improved playing surface, it's safer for them. It will get all-new lighting, which again, will be safer, and also more energy-efficient for the city in terms of paying its electrical bills. And then, the pickleball court adds an activity that always rises to the top on every park system master plan that I've ever done in the state of Florida. I'm accosted by pickleball players on a near-weekly basis. And, and so, I think we'll make them happy. And Leah would like to add to that.
Good morning, Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. Actually, it's an interesting question that you have, because I was at the park recently, and there was a woman out there, like, bending down on the tennis court, doing something unusual. And I was like, what is she doing? And I just sat there and watched her, and what she was doing, she was putting in temporary lines, so that she could play pickleball on the tennis courts at Curry Park. So it was like, okay, so we are correct in what we're doing. So one of the courts was that morning, just being used for pickleball. So I think by balancing it out, we are creating better usage of the actual space that is in Curry Park. So I hope that helps to answer that question.
I have a quick follow-up also, regarding the same subject. I know that the club that I belong to, IBIS, has seen a dramatic increase in pickleball, just as you said. I mean, so much so that it's probably competing equally now with tennis, if not surpassing, you know, the need for tennis courts. And I know that IBIS in particular is talking about adding a significant number of pickleball courts. And it seems that the pickleball courts are always full, and the tennis courts, I mean, we've got 18 of them, but the tennis court's not so much. So have you looked into the future, and are, are people, as Commissioner Lambert said, are they actually utilizing the tennis court at the park currently? And have we thought that through? Because pickleball courts, you can fit probably two pickleball courts and one tennis court.
So, yes, for the whole park system, we've looked at this, not just at Curry Park. So for instance, at, at Howard Park, where we have our clay court tennis facility, we're looking at putting in four pickleball courts there. At South Olive, our hope is to put in five pickleball courts in lieu of three tennis courts, new tennis courts at South Olive. We don't really have the funding right now to add pickleball to Gains, but it might be something in the future. Should tennis, and these courts are used for tennis, they are, if you go there, there, there's always somebody playing tennis there. But should in the future tennis wane, tennis courts can easily be converted to pickleball. So it's not something that we can't look to for the future, should there be a shift.
Just to, I was talking from the community, and they, they know my opinion. I mean, I would love to see more, more tennis courts there, and have a facility like Howard or South Olive. I think the challenge is obviously with Find, and making sure that we balance the needs from there. And so, I'm happy that we have two. I wish I could see clay courts and things that other communities within the West Palm Beach have, and we can't have it, and it really bums me out. But it, it is what it is when it comes to funding and balancing with Find and everything like that. But, you know, I, I go by there every single day and see people playing tennis, and one of the comments that we received, and I know, Chris, you heard it too, is that, oh, can we have clay as well? And could we have that as part of our community? And so it, it really is kind of a bummer that I don't see something being in our north end, that's like South Olive, that's like Howard. I know it's still within West Palm, but it is one of those things, and I'm glad we were able to figure this out, because the community desperately wanted both tennis and pickleball. And I know you were, you've been working hard at it.
Yeah, and we, we, we spent a week just visiting the park at different times throughout the day, and what we found was that the tennis courts were heavily used at either 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning, or after 5:00, right? Middle of the day, you won't find anybody on them. I mean, you'll find a couple people, but very sporadically. It's definitely like the two extremes of the day. So, you know, we do our best to accommodate everybody, but, you know, some sacrifices have to be made, as you say, you know, to balance everything.
Hi, before we move forward...
Sure.
I think I need to get out more, so that I can see pickleball, and learn it, and maybe engage in sports. Maybe that's the catalyst that I need, is pickleball. I appreciate that we are forward-thinking as it relates to the, the increase in, in people that play pickleball, and that we have the pickleball courts and the tennis courts. When I think of a $30 million park, this is extreme, this is beautiful, this is, you know, something that I would believe is a destination park. I don't think that this is just the neighborhood park. I, we, we have a lot of neighborhood parks, this is a destination park. Is there a particular reason that we don't see a basketball court, and with the other courts that are identified?
Well, you, so, this is a waterfront park, and I think we need to really look at the location and what it is. It is a waterfront park. So we have, just down the road, or two blocks away, at Gains Park, I'm sorry, at Pleasant City, we have an outdoor basketball court and an indoor gymnasium with a basketball court. So it's just around the corner, it's two or three blocks away from Curry. But this is a premier waterfront park. And I think to put the same facilities in every park that we have in every community, it takes away from the uniqueness of some of our spaces. And this in particular, I mean, is, is meant to be something unique and different. And also, in the north-end neighborhoods, there's also Pinewood Community Park that has basketball courts. There's a basketball court at Fogelman Park. So there's, there, we have basketball sprinkled throughout the city, and throughout the neighborhoods, but this park in particular, we really feel is, is unique to its location. So to fill it up with tennis courts, and basketball courts, and pickleball courts, and the next thing you know, you're going to have shuffleboard courts, because there is a resurgence of shuffleboard, believe it or not, then we're going to end up hardscaping a beautiful place that is a waterfront location. So that, that's one of the reasons why we, we really didn't feel it was the right place for basketball.
I have a follow-up. Do we feel that this is inclusive? That the, the way that we're looking at the, the activities, the courts, the things that are at this park, do we feel that, that what we are, what is being proposed is an inclusive approach to Curry Park?
We do believe it is. We, we have engaged also with the neighborhood that is just to the west, which, which is the Pleasant City neighborhood, as far as the planning and design of this park. So we do believe it is, and it will be the programming that will make it inclusive, not necessarily the, the spaces themselves.
Do you know when you engaged Pleasant City?
Oh, gosh.
And if you, if you can get back to me on that, when we, when we speak again, because I understand, or I believe that, during the original conversations, that a basketball court was included, and I... And I don't know if that was when Pleasant City was a part of the conversation and if that changed after Pleasant City was included and, and the, the net went out further. But I am curious to know when Pleasant City was, was a part of the conversation and, and as well when basketball was.
I cannot tell you the exact date, but it was approximately January or February of 2020 when we had Pleasant City as part of our stakeholder groups that we were doing the outreach for. We also had, our final meeting just recently was in Pleasant City. That was our last activity about a month ago, month, month and a half ago.
So, can you go back to the community engagement and really, um, because I, I know many of the components, they weren't simply just picked. I mean, we, we really did try to build in the community engagement on the feedback that we've got. And that might shed a little more light on why we pick some things over the others. Yeah, and, and Chris, I, I think the bottom of question six might-
Yeah.
Shed some light on the courts issue.
So, we did ask about basketball courts. And it came in as one of the lower, um, lower tier items. The, um, so typically what rises to the top whenever you do a survey for a park's facility are the things that accommodate general human comfort. Better bathrooms, places to walk, places to sit down, more shade. And we've seen that throughout. So, you can see here in question six, playground is number one because the playground at Curry Park, I mean, I have participated in cleanups there and they're not pretty, right? Shelter and picnic areas because the ones that are there now are, are often inhabited and there's only two. So, there's, uh, demand for that. A multi-purpose trail. So, you can see, it's, it's all like really basic, simple things. And so, when we developed the master plan, that's what we started in on, the things that appealed to the largest groups. Because, you know, the, the directive that we really got from the mayor was that he wanted this to be treated as a city park for all people. And so, we focused on the most basic functions. And then, we tried to look at, um, other requests which were more community-based, like trying to keep the tennis courts. And, um, addressing the homeless issue and adding more lighting and having a better sense of security. And, um, and so, we have the numbers in terms of, um, the number of people that requested, um, basketball courts at the very beginning. And basketball has never been a part of Curry Park's program. I mean, it's never existed there. So, that's how it, you know, didn't, didn't end up on the list. Was because it's not an existing use and it was, um, it was very low on the requests by the community.
Thank you. To follow up with that, was our city's Parks and Rec Advisory Committee involved in the process of, in addition to the community involvement, were they engaged in the process?
Yes, we've met with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee four times.
Just to, not to harp on this, but when I look at the list, um, for question six, are there any other items on that list other than basketball courts that were not included? In other words, I feel like every single one of those items is included other than the basketball courts. So, how did you determine, I guess, if we're looking at the exact same number, percentage of people answering something?
I, I would have to get back to you on that because I think that there, we didn't even put, so for the graphic, there were other items that we asked about and they came in at zero. So, we never even put them on the list. And so, I think that that's, um, that's, that's data that I need to show you.
Sorry. If, if I could make one point of note, I, I don't, I don't know that our, even though we're doing a resiliency hub, I don't know that we've included a community recreation center, a formal one.
It's here.
Versus the, uh, it is, it is part of the pla- yeah, no, I know it's on there.
Okay.
But as far as formally in the Curry Park design that we're proposing, um, right now, it's a resiliency hub and-
So, it's a community center first. It's a resiliency hub second.
Got it.
Yeah.
Can you show the map again that, was there a map that showed what sports activities were at the neighboring parks? Or was it just a map of where the parks are?
It was just the map of the park's locations.
I have a question. Are you hearing a lot of requests for basketball courts?
I am. I'm, I'm, my concern again is whether or not the park is inclusive and the fact that it is a significant, um, price point of a thirty million dollar park and whether or not it is embracing the activities that, that all communities would want to participate in. This park does not simply belong to one neighborhood. This is a, a park that again is one that people will come from, come to from far and wide. And I think that that should be considered. This is, this is a significant park for our community, which is why I respect that we want there to be, um, some things that are unique and, and different about it. But in unique and, and different, I think that we should be careful to not be exclusive. And that's the feeling that I get about this, is that it is exclusive.
Can you, with the map is up, can you point to where exactly all the basketball courts are in the surrounding area?
Sure.
Because we do have, uh, we do have a good amount.
So, um, there's basketball courts at, right here at Blum Park, basketball courts at Coleman Park, um, over here. I can't really see it, but in, in this neighborhood, um, there is more, more, there's, there's a couple in this area where there's Fogelman Park and Pleasant City, not Pleasant City, um, Pinewood Park, Neighborhood Park, which is right in here, actually not that far, it's over here as well, where Pinewood Park is.
What do we think is the cost that's been invested in Pinewood Park?
Oh, gosh, um, that whole-
With this new park bond?
Well, the park bond did not fund Pinewood, Pinewood Park. That was not a part of it. However, as a part of our general fund budget, we have, uh, we continue to resurface and relight those courts at Pinewood Park. So, that's a part of our general, uh, O and M for Pinewood Park itself. We're about, we're gonna put in a new playground in Pinewood Park as well. And Fogelman Park, I believe, received, uh, close to five hundred thousand from the park bond. Sullivan Park, we just did a renovation on, which was not, which was a part of the Public Works Bond, which we did about, I think, six hundred thousand dollars worth of renovations in Sullivan Park. This Parks Bond also does, uh, Osprey, Brian Chappelle, which are other waterfront parks on the north end. Blum Park is getting from the Parks Bond, um, five hundred thousand dollars of improvements. And we just did a, almost a million dollar improvement to the community center in, um, Pleasant City. So, we, we are spreading the funding around, uh, throughout the communities, uh, including, you know, the north end, the south end, central and west.
Thank you. Along the same lines, I'm thinking that the youth of this community, of this area are probably more interested in basketball than pickleball or tennis. And although it's a park that's going to serve the entire city, uh, it is a destination park. You can't help but know that the youth of surrounding area are going to go to, to what's close to them. They're gonna walk, ride their bikes. And it is a special park. And I, I hear Commissioner Warren's concerns that, you know, we wanna make sure it's inclusive and not just having pickleball and that traditionally, um, probably, um, are more catering to a certain demographic maybe. So, would it be possible, if this commission thinks it's something important for, you know, being inclusive with the design that we currently have of this park, would it be possible to incorporate a half court or a full court? You know, if it's important to this commission?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm getting signal from TV 18. They would like you to speak into the microphone.
I forget, it's not just the people here, but people watching. So, is it, would it be possible with the current design to incorporate something that would re, be responsive to, you know, the needs of the whole community, but particularly the youth in, that live in that surrounding area?
So, I mean, anything is possible. But of course, we would have to sacrifice something else. So, that, that's the decision that you would have to make as a, as a, as a, as an elected group, right? So, um, it's very easy to fit a, a, a basketball court on the parking lot. There's no problem. However, we get back into issues with Find. We could replace the tennis courts with a basketball court. Then, you know, there's a, there's a different, different group, um, that would be questioning the decision. You know, and they're all, you know, it's all, they're all different special interest groups. Special interests that we're trying to balance in terms of need, right?
What about dual use? You know, I see all the time in parks where you have a tennis court that also has basketball hoops on either side of the tennis court that could be converted or a half court on one side of the tennis court. So that it's possible when, during the day, when people aren't playing tennis, that, that, you know, the youth of surrounding area could come there and play basketball.
So, that's definitely something that we can explore. That comes down to management, you know, in terms of, um, hours of operation and who manages those hours of operation for when it's tennis versus when it's, uh, basketball. So, that's, you know, that becomes an operational issue, but yes, we can do that as well.
Well, I think this park's gonna be first come, first served, I would think, for, you're not gonna be making reservations for courts, are you? Right, so first come, first served. If a group wants to play basketball and they're there first, then they're gonna have priority over the people that wanna utilize the court as tennis.
At the last Pleasant City, the, the meeting that you had at Pleasant City, did you hear anybody talking about the need for basketball courts? Because I personally haven't heard it. So, I'm just trying to figure out where, where I'm missing in the action on-
So, I, I have personally only had one request for basketball. And it came from, uh, a gentleman's wife who, um, who said, my husband plays basketball and he'd really love to have a basketball near, basketball court nearby. But that was the only request that I personally heard. And when we looked at the numbers, again, uh, at least in terms of the two hundred and thirty-one respondents to the survey, it was low compared to other, other uses.
I have one question. So, in the two hundred and thirty, um, responses, is that what you, is that what you had for question six that was up there with ba- the basketball courts? Looks like there's several features that were hovering around the twenty percent mark. So, I'm thinking twenty percent of two hundred and sixty isn't that small of an amount. I don't even see pickleball listed as an answer. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to gauge, you know, how pickleball got to the top when it's not even on this list as a feature.
That's a good question. I'd have to go back and look at the data.
Thank you. I mean, with, we're looking at survey results and, um, I think you have to look at the demographics that sixteen-year-old males are not gonna participate in, in official surveys like this. It's just not the way, you know, fourteen to eighteen-year-olds operate. You know, they're not gonna come to community meetings and voice their desire for these things. But, you know, I have been in that community, you know, um, and, and, you know, patronized businesses there and, and know enough that, that there is a significant population, um, of our youth that, that if they had the opportunity, if we went directly to them, this would probably be very high on their wish list. But they're just not a demographic that's going to come and express those, uh, opinions, uh, or wants at, at meetings like this, you know, at, at, at citizen meetings. They just don't come to those things. But it doesn't mean that the interest is not there.
Commissioner Fox. I think this is a very slippery slope. I think that if we polled my seventeen-year-old son, he'd also like a gaming center at this beautiful park. I think, I, I'm very appreciative of the community input that has been collected on this. It's been going on for two years now, it seems like. I think that if there is community outcry for basketball courts, we should consider that. I, I think that if that is the case, and maybe, I don't know, you've mentioned bringing back some data. I don't know if that will be before Monday's meeting or at another time.
Yeah, we can look at it right away. I mean, it, it's just a, a, you know, it's been two years, so we have to kind of revisit it.
I, I, I do think that it's, it's worth exploring if we're, if, you know, I have not heard any concerns about this, but if other commissioners have, you know, I'm not questioning that. The concerns that I heard time and time again were about tennis courts and were about, um, the, the boat, the boat ramps. But, you know, I know that not everybody has access. And I think that is something that is very important to all of us, um, is making sure that, you know, that we have done our due diligence to hear from the community as well as that we're building a park that, as you mentioned earlier, is for everybody. So, I think that, um, if you could help find those answers and help, um, you know, and also Commissioner, if there's people who you think should be reaching out to these commissioners before Monday, I think that would be helpful as well.
Okay, so, um, so, um, so moving on. Some close-in views of, um, of the walkways along the water, uh, incorporating more mangrove and living shoreline. We're, we're changing the edge of the coastal line so that it's more natural. A lot of it will be revetment, which is, um, which is rock, so that, um, it, it's softer. It's also more resilient. We're raising the elevation of the park. The cafe is here on the, uh, this would be the northern end. And, um, the resiliency hub to the west. The resiliency hub community center is approximately seventy-two hundred, um, square feet of enclosed space with about twelve thousand seven hundred square feet under roof. It functions on a daily basis as a, um, as a community center. It contains the restrooms and a concession area. It has the park manager's office, storage for the park and other support facilities, such as the generator room and the electrical and IT room, uh, since there'll be Wi-Fi in the park. It'll all run from this central location. While the event space functions on a daily basis as a community center for typical, uh, recreation programming through the Parks Department, it can be rented by the public, uh, the same as you can rent the pavilion downtown on the, on the Great Lawn, um, for special events. It's, um, it is referred to as a resiliency hub because it can be used during disaster recovery for informational purposes, uh, as well as distributing supplies to citizens. It runs on a generator, so, um, it'll be operational when, um, other parts of the neighborhood are not. And it is funded through the FDEO grant that, um, we received on behalf of the city. The cafe is a single-story building. It's just under six thousand square feet enclosed, um, and also about twelve thousand square feet under roof. Important elements of this is, are that, um, we will be going out for an RFP to, um, solicit proposals for the operation of the cafe. The food and beverage prices, um, very strong, uh, we, we very strongly believe they need to be an accessible price point to the public. All of the outdoor areas will remain publicly accessible. And the restrooms that are part of this building serve not just the cafe, but the park at large. So, if you're using the boat ramp, or even if there's not an operator of the cafe at the time, you still have access to restrooms for the public. Some other visuals in terms of the entry to the park. We are working very hard to, um, to retain as much of the existing vegetation as possible, particularly the, um, the banions that are near the existing playground that provide significant canopy. So, that's depicted here in this image. The playground is themed around a seaplane, uh, since seaplanes are a part of the history of the park and used to land here. and used to land here. Some views from the cafe out to the water. Uh, views along the water. This is an image of what the portable stage might be like, located at the, uh, southwestern end of the multi-use space. The social stairs looking south towards the city. And then, uh, the promenade alley that, um, is currently just three rows of, um, Royal Palms. We're gonna envision that, so it becomes a grander entrance to the park. And this is a view looking north. Uh, pickleball courts are in your foreground. The perch beach is off to, um, the right side of the page. And then, um, obviously, this is the schedule that I track, and, um, these are the highlights. We should be completed with design development this summer. We plan on going in, um, we'll be resubmitting the site plan just after, um, just after Face of the City. Uh, we have a page flip with, uh, the CRA and the Parks Department on the 29th of this month to make sure we capture any changes before they get resubmitted. Uh, we completed five additional, um, public engagement activities. We have Face of the City coming up on Monday. Uh, there will be an RFQ for the construction manager coming out over the summer. Uh, construction documents will be completed in, uh, in the fall. And, um, we will begin our bid assistance, construction permitting, uh, services. Um, w- we actually already have, cause we've already had free application meetings with some of the agencies, so we've actually started those, but we'll be much harder into it beginning in the fall. Uh, our permitting agencies are the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the city. And then, um, construction administration will go on from, uh, the winter of this year, uh, so, uh, December roughly, uh, through spring of 2024, when we'll close out the permits. And then our post-occupancy services refer to our warranty inspections, which we would do one year after the park has been accepted, um, by the city, so that we can get any items remediated. And so I just wanna, um, uh, the project funding. So the CRA has put up, um, the funding for the design and permitting of the park and our construction administration services. Uh, the Parks and Rec Bond put up $8 million. And then the rest of this money is money that we found through grants, um, using the money that the city had available as a leveraging point. So, um, by using that strategy, we've been able to garner an additional $21 million that the city did not have. Um, we have about another million and a half in grants outstanding, uh, to hear back on. Uh, we expect the total cost to be between 29 and a half million, up to 38 and a half million. Obviously, we, we are, um, and I'm sure you've been exposed to this through other city projects, we're looking at inflation. So, we're taking the strategy of developing a construction set that, um, is a base, base bid set, so that all the elements that we have committed to are contained in there, but then we'll also have some elements that are add alternatives, that will have the flexibility to make choices on whether we build them immediately or build them at a later stage. So, that's what we're going to do. That's our approach in terms of dealing with the current, um, uh, fiscal environment in which we find ourselves. This was a different project when we started. Yeah.
Well, actually, on the, going back to your, one more slide back. Um, so, two questions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one for construction administration. How is it gonna work? Is it like a phase where you're gonna be closing part of the park and we're doing it so that you, there's some active use, or is it, hey, we're closing this down for these certain periods of time?
So, that'll be a discussion with the construction manager once they're selected.
Okay.
Um, because we cannot dictate the means and methods of their construction. Um, we can state the desire to keep parts of the park operational, and then it's, uh, it's the burden of the construction manager to develop a plan. And, uh, once they're on board, they would, they would bring that before you.
Okay. And two, for purposes of the children's, like the splash pad and the playground.
Mm-hmm.
When do you guys start getting into the details of what you see in those splash pads in the playground or, and budgetary items? Or is it just kind of like, here's your pot, and we'll figure out what can be put in there afterwards?
No, so we're working on those right now. That's, that's what, so when we do our site plan applic- uh, our resubmital, uh, at the beginning of July, those elements will be in there. And Leah and, uh, team will be looking at all of those elements with us on the 29th in a page flip before we put those plans in.
Okay. So, just for my clarification, the, the splash pad that you guys are showing in there, um, that's not, it's not just gonna be water pumping, there's actually gonna be what you see in other splash pads when it comes to some of the fun equipment that are in other parks?
Are you referring to like dumping buckets and things like that?
Yeah.
Um, certainly that we can look at that. I think the initial was that it was gonna be more of a fun, kinda like what they have at the zoo where it just kinda pops up, but I think we're looking at some other elements that make it above ground as well. So, that, that is our hope, that it is more, um, uh, complete.
Okay. And do we have enough room in the recreational area for the children and for a younger kids' park and an older kids' park?
Oh, yes, absolutely. The, um, just in terms of scale, uh, the playground is about an acre.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's a significant, it's a significant playground. Um, one of the things that, you know, Leah and I really discussed at the beginning was that the city doesn't have a destination playground, doesn't really have the space for it. And so, we've allocated, um, $2 million in our funding just towards the playground. Yeah.
I guess you've got a timeline as well. Okay. Um, so, you've mentioned programming earlier, and that will be a big component in helping, um, Mr. Fox, to get a bigger picture of what's gonna be happening in this park. When is the program conversation gonna place?
At 3 o'clock. And it's, and they're right there.
Oh, literally today?
Yeah, literally today at 3 o'clock.
Wonderful. So will we have some sense of, I don't know where you are. Is that the first meeting about programming? Is that...
Um, so, no. So, it's the strategy that, um, BR, like, we, so, i- it's actually sort of the final meeting in terms of their, um, reporting and strategy. And so, um, once, um, you know, Chris and Leah are able to kinda sit down and look at the information, then we need to start looking at, um, the long-term strategy and, and when to start it, you know, cause, you know, BRV's recommendations is that we start roughly about a year before the, um, um, before the park is open to put our park manager in place, um, put our operations program in place, develop the, the calendar. So, it's, you know, there'll be a lot more information about that after today.
Okay, great. And then, just also related to the conversation of equity, regarding the next slide on the grants that we received.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, thank you so much for you and your team's effort in going out and getting those grants. Clearly, that was a substantial impact to this project. I'm very excited. I would guess, I know what the requirements are of the FDPE resiliency grant, but I was just curious if there are any requirements that you can think of offhand that were rather large or substantial regarding the other Department of Economic Opportunity grant.
So, the Deca- uh, Department of Economic Opportunity Grant, which is essentially CBDG, CBDG funds from HUD, okay? And so they must be used for resiliency purposes. And so the items that they particularly cover are raising the elevation of the park, removing the existing seawall and replacing it with revetment. The, um, the, the landscape, all of the security lighting, uh, so all of the site lighting, it's covering all of that. Um, as well as, uh, you know, so it's really, it's really mostly for, um, it, it, it's, it's based on resiliency. Oh, and also covers the resiliency hub. I, I knew I was missing one. So, it also covers the resiliency hub.
So, does, the, the two differ? Um, it looks like one's the Department of Economic Opportunity and then there is a resiliency grant. Both of them focus on resiliency?
They both focus on resiliency. However, the FDPE, so a state grant, has more flexibility in it, and we can actually use it for portions of the recreation programming as well. Um, so it can go towards, um, you know, it can go towards like seating in the park, or, uh, it's got more flexibility. And then the Land and Water Conservation Fund is all recreation-based. We can use that towards the playground or the splash pad or whatever we want to.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions? Or will you finish?
Any other questions? Yeah, I'm, but, I mean, we were looking at dates. Uh, we have crab on Friday and Face of the City on Monday. We met with the mayor this morning, um, and that completes our agenda of meetings, which you see here, uh, for the month of June.
Great, thank you so much. Did, were there any additional questions, commissioners?
I would just make a comment that it's great to see this moving forward, and I know this is long awaited. And I know that when I moved to West Palm Beach from Cocoa Beach area, you know, also a, uh, water-facing community, is that this is much needed, and, um, I'm hopeful that everyone will feel welcome there and, uh, looking forward to seeing it move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chris, any questions or comments?
No.
Well, I, I would just love to circle back with some of the things that we talked about, that we had questions about. Um, I know in terms of just seeing the numbers, if there is a way for us to actually see the data that you pulled from, you know, I know you said there were some things in the list that were a zero, but I'm just, you know, I am curious to see more about how did we come up with pickleball being number one and basketball, although it looked like 20% of the people wanted that, that did not make the list. I, I would just like to understand better before we go into Monday, and so that we can have, understand who participated and who had the opportunity to get their feedback. Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I have something unrelated to this topic, if I could.
Do we want to, do you need Chris, or do you want him to s...
Oh, I, it's very short. I was ju- not that Chris.
Yeah, the other Chris?
Um, I, I was just gonna say, I realize that we don't have city administration here, but clearly there's some issues with the microphones. You know, I wanna make sure that all the residents are able to hear these meetings, so I don't know if, you know, TV 18 or somebody is listening can look into that, because I think this is something where, was a reoccurring issue when we have meetings in here.
Okay, that's a good point. It seemed like they were coming in. I know I was seeing Cheryl pop in too when she couldn't hear us. So, and then Jerry's here. So, hopefully the ones that weren't, did not need to be changed out were working correctly. But I think that's a great point. Jerry, if you could have someone look into that. Thank you so much.
That, that's all I got.
Okay, well, great. So, um, I don't have anything else. Does anyone have anything else for the good of the body that we should be discussing or comments? Okay, great then. This meeting is adjourned at 12:04.
Great, thanks.